Twenty eighteen Planning Board meeting. And first, oh, I thought it was going to be approval of the minutes from last meeting, but it's election of Chair and Vice Chair. First item on the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Joe.
When you say, "What's his name?" I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Joe.
Fighting board humor.
Vice Chair.
Oh, yeah.
Who was at the meeting? Can we start again? Go ahead, Peter.
Victoria was going to do you, and that's going to do Joe.
Doesn't matter, whichever. Okay. I would like to make a nomination for Chair, and I would like it to be Carol Ann Jordan.
Second?
Any discussion? Any mutiny in going? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? I abstain. All right. Next, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I would like to nominate Joe Challett as Vice Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. That was difficult. Okay. Approval of minutes from the December nineteen twenty seventeen meeting. Any arrows or omissions?
I'll move that we approved those minutes.
All right, Brad Second. Jim Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? It's unanimous. Okay. First item on the consent agenda. Maxwell Woods, Joel Fitzpatrick, Doing Business As Maxwell Woods LLC is requesting a ninety-day extension of the final subdivision resource protection permit and site plan approval granted October seventeen twenty seventeen for Maxwell Woods. A development located at one twelve through one fourteen Spurwick Avenue, which includes thirty-eight condominiums and eight apartments in two buildings. Section sixteen dash two dash six subdivision ordinance post-approval requirements. Section nineteen dash eight dash three resource protection regulations and section nineteen dash nine site plan regulations. All right. Do we have any?
The applicant asked if he needed a representative, and I advised him no. So if you want someone here, I'll own that.
Okay.
Worrying the purpose of the extension is just getting the plan signed and filed?
Yeah, they had several conditions on their approval, and they are, I know they're working diligently to meet those requirements, but they're not ready yet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
No, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
A motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that, based on the request submitted by the applicant and under section sixteen dash two dash six of the subdivision ordinance, the request of Joel Fitzpatrick, Doing Business As Maxwell Woods LLC, for a ninety-day extension of the approval for final subdivision review, a resource protection permit, and site plan review of the Maxwell Woods development, which includes thirty-eight condominiums, eight apartments in two buildings, located at one twelve through one fourteen Spurwick Avenue, and amendments to the Spurwick Woods subdivision related to the road extension, greenbelt trail, and condominium lighting be approved.
Jim Second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Baylen Morris Resource Protection Permit. Ronald Baylen and Patricia, go ahead.
This may be out of order, but I understand that item five is also a table motion, and there are two people in the audience here for that item. I didn't know if the Planning Board wanted to consider taking it out of order.
It's fine with me.
Yeah. Wait, number five, taking that now?
Yeah, that's what she's suggesting.
The only problem that I would have is that technically it's on for the agenda at seven forty, and has had some interest in it. So I just, I would hate to see if people who were waiting till seven forty or closer get here to, I know there's going to be limited comment because it is something tabled. You might miss that, so I don't want to seem like we're moving up in the agenda. But that's the only thing that I have. If you guys, if other members of the board disapprove of that, then that's fine, but I just, that's my only thing, because it did have a lot of interest from the public the last time we were here.
Go ahead, Peter.
Well, I would, I take John's point, but for those who are now here, this will at least let them go home. The people who do show up on time are simply going to be faced with a motion to table, which it's not costing them anything, and we're freeing up another few people if we let them go now. So I would, I would be in favor of moving it up on the agenda.
Yeah, I agree with Pete. I'm okay with it.
I'm okay. Both good arguments. I'm okay with it. So, for the...
Do you have to recuse yourself?
I do, I have to go away. I'll be right back.
All right. I'm not even going to move for this one. Next item on the agenda is Nineteen Wells Road Telecommunication Tower. Global Signals Acquisitions Four LLC Crown Castle is requesting site plan review, a resource protection permit, and shoreland zoning review to construct a one hundred eighty-foot-tall telecommunications tower to be constructed at Nineteen Wells Road, R five dash thirty. Section nineteen dash nine site plan, section nineteen dash eight dash three resource protection permit, and section nineteen dash eight dash two shoreland zoning performance standards. And the applicant has made a request to table the meeting until the February twenty-sixth meeting. Is there any discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion? Pete?
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and facts presented, the application of Global Acquisitions Roman Four LLC for site plan review, a resource protection permit, and shoreland zoning review to construct a one hundred eighty-foot-tall communications tower to be located at Nineteen Wells Road be tabled to the February twenty-sixth two thousand eighteen meeting of the Planning Board.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion of the motion?
Do we know the reason? Is it's not ready yet, I assume?
They, they had major changes they wanted to make to the plan, and they need more time.
And just for the record, I didn't realize that we were moving it up because there was a motion to table. I didn't hear that part of the discussion. I thought we were moving up to discuss it, so obviously I have no problem with us talking about now, just if it's requested to have a table.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, now, Bob. Okay. Baylen Morris Resource Protection Permit. Ronald Baylen and Patricia Morris are requesting an after-the-fact report resource protection permit to alter fifteen hundred and fifty-seven square feet of RP two wetland for drainage and lawn area located at twenty-six Sanford Cove Road. Section nineteen dash eight dash three resource protection permit.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, above my cap are Mitchell and Associates, and representing Ron and batting for this application.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Bob.
Shall I move it? Is that better?
It is. Are we on the air? Yeah.
My mic sits here.
Okay.
I may. The mic seemed to be pointed down closer to the...
All right, you're better.
I think we're up. The last time we were before the board, we had gone through revised plans based on the submission after the site walk. We had submitted the plans later than the normal time because the plans would have had been submitted to Friday before we had the site walk. And as I indicated the last time, we decided it wasn't prudent to submit the plans before we had the site walk to figure if there were other issues the Planning Board members had. So the plans you had at the last meeting you saw are, and the ones you presently have in your packet, are the plans that we had submitted to address all of the comments from Mr. Harding and several of Maureen's comments and several of the comments the board had. So we have not revised anything since then. I don't know if you want me to walk through the plan set again with the changes we made the last time that I discussed, or what's your preference? Yeah, okay. These are just, the shots I'm showing up on the wall are just some of the shots of the backyard showing where the hot tub is, the location of where the... So this is the hot tub on the concrete pad. That's the failed pipe section showing. This is a shot looking from the back end of the direction of flow down through the yard. This is underneath the deck area. And this just gives another perspective looking from the downstream end of the yard, looking back up towards the alignment of where the existing drain line falls. What I did in that packet is to take the plan and provide a little more delineation because the line weight and the colors really weren't reading very well. So we highlighted what is the RP two wetland delineation along this side and then down along this side. Everything within the fenced-in area of the yard was actually GPS located by Albert Frick, who had done the original wetlands delineation on this for the, actually, the property owner prior to the individuals who built the home that was acquired. The area that's hatched in, in this location, is the one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet of wetland impacted area. That's the fill area. The other portion where the actual underdrain occurs is still in, well, it's a mowed area. When Albert Frick reported back out there to redelineate the wetland area, the vegetation, even though it's grass and there is some wetland vegetation along the outer perimeter which we saw beyond the mowed edge, is still meets the RP two definition of a wetland condition as far as the soils and the vegetation classification. So the impact that we're talking about for replacing the underdrain really falls within what is still classified as RP two, but within the wetland. The last submission, our original submission, was just to replace the four-inch line that had failed. Mr. Harding's comments were that it would probably make more sense to go with a larger pipe, which we did agree with. So we changed that from a four-inch to an eight-inch. And on the upstream end, we want to putting in a screen, basically, is to keep large debris from coming down through there, as well as, it's an animal, rodent trap, if you will, to keep activity from going down through that. We are rebuilding the head wall with riprap at the end of the pipe, and then we have an outfall on this lower end here. We will do some cleaning of the sediment that's built up down there and also have a head wall and a riprap apron on the downstream end of the pipe. These were all comments that were part of Mr. Harding's review. Basically, this is the, the existing conditions that posed up look very much different. It still shows the alignment of the pipe coming through. We had identified in our submission an area where we would wind up having to do a little more disturbance in this area where there's some existing moss, and it's only by the nature of the way the moss is, which is classified as a wetland, RP two condition, that we're appealing that back. We've added notes to the plan to document how that's to occur, which was on the request of Mr. Harding. The other temporary impact is basically the excavation required to remove and trench for the new line, and that layer will be stabilized and basically returned back to the same adjacent conditions. And the last time we were here, I mean, on the site walk, the board had asked a couple questions regarding, there were some stone, stepping stones that came from the patio leading across where this underdrain isn't going to the upland edge. We had taken those off the plan at the request of the Planning Board. And one of the other comments that was raised is one was the deck existing on the house. We had submitted a letter that the patio had put together, that the deck was on the house when they acquired it. The other question was regarding the fence that goes around the property, various between chain link and ornamental fence that's up here, and basically an animal fence, if you will, a wire fence that goes across the back. That was all in place when they purchased the home, and that's in that written documentation provided. And then the question regarding the hot tub, when they put that in, they had spoken with the code office at the time and were told they did not need a permit to put the hot tub in, and it was over where the existing concrete paver patio was located, and that's where they installed the hot tub. So, and at the last meeting, the board had asked several questions in terms of, one, relocating the hot tub and relocating the dog run, and at the last time, we did discuss the fact that there really is no alternative place to put the hot tub. It was discussed about putting it in the front yard, and that's where the leach field is, you can't do that, plus basically, putting your hot tub out in your front yard doesn't really give you a lot of privacy. Some of the preferences, they stated last time, and we're reinforcing is that we prefer not to remove the hot tub. Then the other was to relocate the dog run. And while that's a freestanding element, as you'll probably remember when we walked the property, that backyard is pretty steep, you know, there really is a flat area other than where it occurs. So we have looked at an option, that if, I'll pass you up a sketch of what we put together. So the sketch we have before you, it shows where the existing dog run is, and one of the things we've looked at is to try and minimize some of the hardscape that's in there and to pull the dog run out of where it just barely encroaches onto what is still classified as RP two, even though it's the lawn area, is to remove a three-foot strip of the existing concrete patio and shifting the dog run closer to where the hot tub is. And then there's a strip of concrete pavers that are in front of the hot tub and extending down towards the dog run, taking that strip off sort of lines with the front of the hot tub. And then where I've added in one of the stairs or steps to get up to allow you to get access into the hot tub, there's a narrow band in there, the width of what the two steps or treads would be, about two feet, removing that section of pavers and basically restoring it to a grassed area. That would reduce the amount of impervious surface to fit by fifty-eight square feet, roughly an area seven by seven. So that's an option that we can look at minimizing the amount of impact that's on there. All that area that we're talking about removing the pavers on is area that is considered a filled portion of that one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet. So this was the one logical opportunity to relocate the dog run if we could. Anyplace else showed up putting it up in the front yard, which if anybody owned dogs, if you put them up in the front yard and people are driving by or walking by, some dogs will start barking, and you wind up creating neighbors who are probably unhappy if you have your dog and a dog run out front. So really, the backyard is the most logical place for it, and by doing that shift, it does, as I said, free up some of the hardscape area.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What about the Conservation Commission's recommendation?
Well, when I looked at that, when they talked about thirty feet, we're not even that far off the building with impact. The furthest point from the house to the, where the, the underdrain gets replaced is probably about eighteen feet.
From the corner?
Yeah.
Over to the left-hand there?
Basically, greatest distance from there to there is just about eighteen feet.
So you're saying...
What about going laterally, though?
Going lateral?
Yeah, that's what I took that to mean.
I took it as this direction. As we discussed the last time, you know, the first time we talked about this, this slope which is filled, to remove that material and try and restore that to a wetland condition, it's not really going to work.
Okay. Maureen, I'm going to clarify the Conservation Commission's...
Sure. I met with the Conservation Commission last Wednesday evening and actually was just finishing the draft minutes today. What the minutes said was that they were frustrated that there had been an illegal fill of RP two wetland, and also that this particular property owner had not been the one that had done the fill, and they struggled with it. There was a discussion about granting a permit and imposing a fine, the money which would be set aside for other wetland work in town. That did not get support. There was discussion about just letting them have the permit as is. That motion failed by a vote of two to four, and then they worked on it some more, and what they came up with was a recommendation that some of the fills should be removed. And the way to describe it was to come up with this, anything within, to allow the pipe to go in, and that anything that was more than thirty feet away from the foundation, which basically, if we're looking at the plan behind us, is everything to the left. So they base, they were saying...
This?
Yeah. So they were saying anything thirty, more than thirty feet away from the foundation, the fill of the RP two in that area...
So basically, you're looking at somewhere up in that corner.
Yeah, well, you'd take a radius, I would imagine, off the corner of thirty feet.
Right. And the thirty came from a way to describe what their intent was. So their intent was to live with the fill behind the house and around the edges of the house, but further away to ask for some of the fill to be removed and to have it be restored to wetland and planted with native plants.
My initial impression, that's like you said, still just a small amount. I'm not sure what the point would be in how is it going to make it any better. I guess, you know, I don't, I don't agree with it.
To be perfectly honest, when we discussed, when we discussed this before, trying to do wetland restoration on that side, the way the slope is on there, the amount of excavation that would have to be taken out of there in order to try and get down to a level where there's a hydrology that's going to support the wetland conditions, is going to be rather difficult, and the success rate is probably going to be slow.
To me, just to comment on that, I mean, I understand what the Conservation Committee was saying, and I'm actually kind of, it makes me feel a little bit better that they were struggling with this too, just like we have, because the, I think the problem that we have here, that when we're looking at this property, is not with the owners right now, it's with the previous owner that definitely did something that he should not have done. And, and I take the applicant at their word with regards to when they bought the house, and they're here now doing the right thing. And I just don't, I don't, I'm with Jim, I don't think that this thirty-foot, I know, I understand the Conservation Committee's intent on that, and I think it's admirable, but at the same time, I think, realistic-wise, it's not going to make that much of a difference with that. I mean, we were out there at that property, and I just think from the house, thirty feet, it's not even going to be a significant amount, and the, sort of, the taking away that fill is going to be more effort than it's worth, and so I would not be inclined to adopt the Conservation Committee's recommendation.
Go ahead, John.
Well, I did a quick sketch here. I don't know if you want to look at, make sure. This is how I would interpret what they are requesting.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with you. I don't really see the feasibility in doing that in any kind of workable way.
I agree.
Okay. Jim, you were...
Yeah.
You were.
All right.
What about, go ahead, Peter.
That's a question for Bob. I'm trying to interpret your, your handout. You're talking about moving the dog run a slight distance towards the hot tub.
Correct.
And then you're talking about putting in a different type of paver?
No, basically, that is a mobile or freestanding structure, and then the material, and I forget what you had underneath, but what do you have underneath?
They're vinyl, they're...
They're like pads or what have you. And basically, what we'd do is remove the three-foot swath of pavers. It's three by eleven, something like that. They would actually take the pavers out, adjust the grade, and slide the whole dog run...
Right.
...towards the patio. And then that other strip that's along the side, parallel with the, the front of the hot tub, remove those pavers.
But you're talking about replacing it with a stormwater brick paver? Is that an impervial?
That's a potential opportunity to do that in the future.
That's not part of what you're suggesting, no?
No, it's just, I want to say that that would be a potential to replace those with a porous paver in the future.
And what's happening on the crosshatch section in the dog run and along the edge by the hot tub there?
Basically, that's just showing where there's existing pavers that would come out. So what's, what's shown in red are pavers that would be physically removed, and that area would be just grassed over. And then, of course, the dog run, as we're saying, would be slid three feet closer towards the hot tub and then, you know, restore the area underneath that.
Okay, so we can ignore that note about replace existing concrete pavers with stormwater concrete brick paper?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's what had me confused.
I forgot to address that, it's a possibility if they wanted to replace the pavers, they could do that, to do that with a porous paver.
Go ahead, John.
Just one last question on the Conservation Commission. Did they actually go visit the site, or did they make this recommendation based on the drawings?
They made it based on the plans. They could not visit the site.
Any other questions?
I guess this concept plan, what's, doesn't seem like a lot of work for not much or any benefit to me.
As I said, you know, the board asked us to look at what opportunities there were, and this was the closest thing we could come to. Sliding the dog run any further would put it in front of the door if it comes out onto the patio, so...
I, I don't, I can't say I don't like it. It's, it's, I'm trying to get the right words. It's, it doesn't seem to be any point to it, to me.
All right.
Go ahead, John.
Just on Jim's point, I kind of agree. I don't think it's necessary. I like that the applicant's thinking about what they can do to sort of rectify the situation that they inherited, but I don't think it's that necessary.
Okay.
Okay. I see nodding over here. I, I, part of me agrees the necessity of it. I appreciate the effort, and I think it would be a good thing to do. So, Victoria, you look like you want to say something?
Yeah, I would have to say I agree with you, but I think I don't have the votes. That's why I was quiet.
Yeah, I don't see the need to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob? I was going to say, does anyone from the audience want to comment on this, but the only people here are the homeowners, and they have someone speaking already, so. All right, anything else?
Yeah, motion for board to consider findings of fact. Ronald Baylen, number one, Ronald Baylen and Patricia Morris are requesting an after-the-fact resource protection permit for one thousand one hundred and fifty-five, one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet of fill, fill in, and RP two wetland for landscaping, and an additional three hundred and fifteen square feet of temporary alteration to replace drainage pipe located at twenty-six Sanford Cove Road, which requires a resource protection permit under section nineteen dash eight dash three. Number two, the proposed permit, excuse me, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not materially obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across or from the alteration area. Three, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not impound surface waters or reduce the absorbs, absorbive capacity of the alteration area so as to cause or increase the flooding of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not increase the flow of surface waters across or the discharge of surface waters from the alteration area so as to threaten injury to the alteration area or to upstream and or downstream lands by flooding, draining, erosion, sedimentation, or otherwise. Five, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not result in significant damage to spawning grounds or habitat for aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Six, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not pose problems related to the support of structures. Seven...
Seven, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quantity or quality of groundwater. Eight, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will not disturb coastal dunes or continuous back dune areas. Number nine, the proposed pipe replacement and fill will maintain or improve ecological and aesthetic values. Number 10, the pipe replacement and fill will maintain an adequate buffer area between the wetland and adjacent land use, uses. Number 11, the pipe replacement and fill will be accomplished in conformance with the Erosion Prevention Provisions of the Environmental Quality Handbook, Erosion and Sediment Control, published by the Main Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated March 1986, or subsequent revisions thereof. Number 12, the pipe replacement and fill will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings and from construction into wastewater treatment facilities in violation of Section 15-1-4 of the Sewage Ordinance. And 13, the proposed pipe replacement and fill is not located in a flood plain. 14, the application substantially complies with Section 19-8-3 of the Resource Protection Regulations. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Ronald Valen and Patricia Morris for an after-the-fact resource protection permit of, excuse me, for 1,557 square feet of fill and an RP2 wetland, and for landscaping and an additional 275 square feet of temporary alteration to replace drainage pipe located at 26 Sanford Cove Road, be allowed, or no, are we tabled on this?
Be approved.
Yeah, be approved to the regular, be approved.
Subject to Bob.
Subject to the, to these conditions. Number one, that the plans be revised to address the town, town engineer's comments dated January 8, 2018. Number two, that a note be added to the plan that erosion control be accomplished in compliance with the Environmental Quality Handbook, Erosion and Sediment Control, published by the Main Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated March 1986, or subsequent provisions. And three, that there be no alteration of the site nor issuance of a building permit until the plans be revised, have been revised to address the above conditions and submitted to the town planner.
Go ahead, second. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, Jim, all right, go ahead.
The person who drafted this clearly wasn't paying attention.
Had she been on the...
I thought I grabbed the wrong one.
275 square feet, I think, needs to be updated to 315.
Oh, under the, all right, so, can I make my own friendly amendment? Okay, so, with, with regards to be it ordered, the, I would change additional 275 square feet to additional 315 square feet.
You okay with that, Jim?
Yes.
Anything else? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Upstaining? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on schedule.
All right. Any public comment not on the agenda? I see no one. What's my next motion?
Move adjourned.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Wow, there's a lot of time this hour.
And it's 7:34.
What a rule, right?